Okay. So you don't get them on the, oh, okay. I need the paper, but I get them on this. Yeah, I agree. They do the same thing. Oh, I know. I can't figure out how to do any of that.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started. Open the call to order, the Tuesday, March 5th, 2019 City Council meeting. First item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Okay. Next item is the consent agenda for the minutes of the past month.
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction on the minutes for the February 5th work session. I guess with the City Council meeting. It's on page four of five. And it talks about a concern that I expressed regarding the Chamber funds. The paragraph says Counselor McCarthy would like to see the Chamber utilize the funds to assist tourism facilities, et cetera. And it goes on to say that that I said that there was nothing in the contract to actually enforce the Chamber to utilize the money if the TRT goes way up. And what I meant, what I thought I said is that I would like to see the Chamber establish a fund within those with those, within those TRT funds to assist in building a related facility. So I didn't want to use the entire amount of money to build tourism-related facilities. And I don't remember saying that there was nothing to enforce the Chamber to actually utilize the money. That doesn't even make sense. So I guess I would like to have that part omitted.
Any other concerns on the minutes?
Are we moving to the next?
Yeah, sure.
I'm just gonna make, well, never mind, I'll save that. It's on the February 19th session, first session. It's Strategic Plan Number Seven. And it's the first line. And it says St. Dennis said in December 2018.
I think it was 2017.
Where is that?
Several of us attended a seminar on implementing a visioning strategic planning process. It's the very last paragraph of page two of five.
I don't recall being that specific because I don't remember it being December.
I think you said the last December or something.
I just know I've been invited to things in December of 2018, and that wasn't one of them.
That was the strategic plan, the visioning process.
Yeah, and it's, you're probably, you're right. It probably was.
Right after you started, maybe?
Yeah.
No, because I came in 2017.
Yeah, December 1st, 2017. A couple of weeks later, we went down to, was it Eugene or Albany or someplace? But four of us went down there and did the visioning.
I thought it was later than that, but yes. But if that's the case, it would have been 17. It was not this past year, you're correct. It wasn't a month or two ago. Thank you for catching that. I don't remember saying December.
Okay, we have two items to correct. Anything else? And then.
I move, we approve the minutes with the noted corrections of February 5th, 6th, 12th, 13th, and 19th.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for that part. Next item is the public comment phase. Anybody wish to make a comment? Ollie?
First of all, I want to say to Councilor McCarthy and to Mr. Benson and City Manager for the last Monday of each month that you come in and discuss some items. I really like that you guys are just, you know, going to just, you know, chance to, um, like that what is going on and share your opinion. And so thank you both for making that efficient time. I'm coming because I have a strange occupation that I've given myself. I pick up cigarette butts in trash. And I walk about a mile every day, even in the rain. And I constantly pick up. So I began investigating what other counties are doing in Oregon, cities across the nation, and I'm most closely oriented with the coastal. And I'm finding that our communities is regularly behind their time without having the proper type equipment to take care of the trash they have on the freeway. I don't know how many of you walk. And I guess I will ask you all, who's got to pick up cigarette butts in the season? Because we have, one thing, a great deal of them. And I promise not to put them up today when I got this before this afternoon. It was a short walk, and I should like to see. But one of my critical things here is after doing a lot of research online, and I presented some of this to the three people that I just discussed. And also, I asked the leadership and checked with Jim to make a presentation to the Chamber, if they can allow my time, and to other environmental groups in our community to say that I believe that we need 12 recyclable area containers at 12 locations. We have approximately, I get reports from the trash people, either 72 or 80 trash receptacles in town groups. And 12 of them are strategically placed where we see the most trash and most cigarette butts. I can tell you that when we do the research, one of the biggest trash processes is for most cigarette butts on the ground. They're the single most littered item in the world. And they cause the most deaths of wildlife and other types of animals. And they also leave residue for 18 years, 10 years, up to 20 years as they change the confection of our waterways. So for all of those reasons, the fact that we have no place, and we talk to the red monkeys, they say they want to put them in the trash because it might cause fire. 72% of all cigarette butts, they do so with cigarettes down on the ground, and they don't think about it. So it's, I believe that it's something that we can easily take care of. Also, I hear reports from people all the time saying, you have no recycle. I mean, we have no places for cans or any of the recyclable items. And I've given pictures to some of you, and I've given another picture of what they're doing in other cities and communities and small beach towns throughout the United States. And they all have recyclable places connected to their trash. And they have places to put their butts. So what my suggestion is, we want something to be built up to the Chamber and to other groups, and then the community itself. This would cost between $1,800 to $2,400 to have 12 recyclable containers, cigarette butt places, because they really want to put them in some places that they go to save. And I believe that the amount of City Council and the Chamber, with the community organizations going and involving the environment and the community, that that's something that's very new. Certainly something that I think is, is way past time, really. And so I would suggest all of you, the next time you take any kind of walk, is it down? It's not just on the sidewalk or the street, on the beach. In fact, just today, walking down from Monroe Street back up to Jackson, I picked up two cigarette butts on the evening, and I walked it morning. And I walked the same way again. I picked up cigarette butts then, too. So for fresh, this is not even a tourist time. So I wanted to encourage you to think about that. I would give more information, too. And I've also kind of, I'm wanting to go around to the businesses, because they do this in all the towns, and I'll show you the pictures. Businesses outside, especially restaurants where they have employees, they have tons of cigarette butts. Go behind any of the restaurants and you see, I mean, if people are noted that they're smoking, yeah. This, $4 at Fenmire Day, built with sand. And this absolutely takes stairs to do it. I'm going to take this to all the restaurants and to, around to different businesses and encourage them. The other people I'm going to talk to are contractors. The new house is being built by Jackson there. When I walk by the day, I pick up $4 bucks. When I walk by this afternoon, I pick up $6. Our workers forget about that, and they do tell all these people, um, in locations like that. So that's what I'm not doing. Still looking on school property. I just want to give an overview center. I think it'd be over, so we should worry you. But I would like to say, I'm also making kind of a silly poster, and I'd like to pass that around. But what it says is cigarette butts are the most littered item in the world. Butts produce 7,000 chemicals when they're released and allowed to immigrate. They leave killing plastic particles. I don't know if you know, but they're all plastic. They take 18 to 10 years to degrade down, 18 months to 10 years. Again, coastal visitors have very negative reactions to seeing cigarette butt litter. Running creatures and birds die from cigarette butt debris. Coastal areas around the world are creating these no-free areas. California has been known right now for the governor, it's only been for the governor, making all beach towns hopeless. You seriously could really do that in one of the California. Small communities to large urban areas providing receptacles for butts and recyclables, saving on pollution costs. So I'll pass this around. And I'm sure many of you have been highly experienced, but anyway, I'd like you to think about that. And trust me, I will be back. And I will bring signatures from the community to address this issue. Thanks for your time. And again, I'm not going to open this, but this is just a house in our life. So thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Ollie. Anybody else wish to have a comment? Okay, then we'll move on. Our first item, Ordinance 1902. Karen and Ashley.
On February 12th, I brought you a draft proposal of ordinance change for any code regarding homeowners going to tenants paying on utility billing. And you approved our draft proposal to help homeowners as the personal home utility bill instead of our tax.
There's no comments or questions. We'll move for a motion.
I move to have the attorney read Ordinance 19-02 twice by title only.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Jill, you want to call the roll?
Counselor President Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stoudamire?
Yes.
For this 19-02, for the purpose of revising Chapter 13, 218, filling and collection of utility charges amended to 00-03.
Okay. And a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 19-02.
Seconded.
Any questions, discussion? Jill?
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor President Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Stoudamire?
Yes.
Karen. Next item is also Karen. Qualifications for an engineer.
So on the same evening, I talked to you about a desire, about a request for qualifications to get an engineer of record class staff. And you agreed to that request in time.
This would be for an engineer to be available to staff to provide advice, review situations that we're looking at. But in a larger, in the event of a larger project, we would go off proposals with other engineers for that design.
I know I saw it in here, but I'm trying to find it.
I can bring you my copy.
Okay, there it is. Retained as an on-call, as needed basis. Schedule of performance.
Do we have any idea how much this might cost?
It depends on how many projects we might have. Then they, they didn't give a time. After, through the process, it still be followed as it is today, that would change right after. I think a lot of this would lend itself to our planning, for our master plan projects, and being able to really know what projects are going to cost us. Or be consulting as much as it is as engineer of natural project. And you really need that when it comes to planning and budgeting. We're doing a lot of speculating with the budget. The engineer costs are that, but.
So they're being paid by a project?
Yes, correct. And you're going to be saying, just when we put something out, then what would we need to evaluate this project? And then give us a better way to call it. Such, just like we do today. Have somebody who gets to know a master plan really well. Their construction, if they're trying to make improvements to, they'd be much more knowledgeable instead of someone that they have never done projects for us before, that's just not as knowledgeable.
Are you anticipating this to be just based on hours spent consulting? Or is there a retainer fee also contemplated? Or does it just depend on what they propose?
Yeah, it really depends on the projects and what they propose. I haven't seen a project yet, but there's been a retainer fee involved. So I don't anticipate giving them that kind of arrangement. I wouldn't necessarily see that as a positive thing to do.
Yeah, I just want to clarify a point for your question, Counselor Rizley. Is that I don't know if all projects would be, or all work would be funded by a specific project because when we're evaluating projects for the, the master plan or to do work within the master plan, we may have conversations about which of these three should be a priority, that kind of thing. So there will be some that are more on a general nature. But if we're talking about how much should this cost? Or what do you think the timing should be on a particular project, we would charge the project.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move forward. We're looking for our motion to approve.
I move to approve the request for qualifications for city engineer of record as presented.
Seconded.
Any discussion? No? Jill?
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor President Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Stoudamire?
Yes.
Next item. Consideration using recycling reserve funds for recycling building repair. Karen.
Our recycled buildings, as well as City Hall, we've had roof leaks for the last several years. Our recycled buildings, to point now, what we need to get the roof repaired. The siding is in very bad shape. And so it's just time to correct the maintenance of the building. We have the funds and the budget. We put out requests for quotes, and those have come back. And I'd like to spend the money and have the budget to be able to get the recycled buildings back up to par with something that's, that's the traffic in town.
How many quotes did you get?
Yeah, three.
And does this hit in the middle, or is this?
And this is, yeah, exactly in the middle. It's not the lowest. The lowest bidder could not leave the timeframe or physically your budget. If we commit to that, that was part of the requirement, but the second person.
So it'll be for both replacing roof and siding?
Correct.
Have the same kind of material that's there now, or?
Correct, because both are the same color as it currently is. It's old siding, so they don't offer that color. But they have two colors that are very similar to one of the lighter and darker stuff. So if we have, we don't have any issue.
Okay.
And both of those colors are still available.
I would move that we approve the use of funds from the recycling reserve unallocated project for repairs of the recycled building.
I'll second the motion. All right, go ahead, Robin.
Any discussion? Okay, Jill?
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor President Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Mayor Stoudamire?
Yes.
Next item. Consideration of amending a scope of contract for financial advisor. Bruce?
Yes, sir. We have a contract with DA Davidson for advising, as a financial advisor, for any bond work or whatever that we might have associated with the new City Hall. I have asked that we extend that contract to also include financial advice as it relates to financing of utility projects. And there was a question regarding some of the disclosures. And as I understand it, we've had, Ashley's had contact with bond counsel. And bond counsel said they did not have concerns, they did not express any concerns that there would be issues as a result of what was on the disclosures.
And I got a copy of that evaluation. I'm satisfied with it.
One question I have is, are you trying to bundle the two requests into one?
No.
For the bond measure? So we'll be looking at a separate utility request and a separate City Hall request?
Yes. And I imagine that any City Hall project would be of a scope, we would probably be doing a bond. But there might be other options, loan options. And there may be bundling of projects with some of the state agencies, for example. But we wanted to have the best advice as far as, like, when you have all these projects that we're trying to do, time them over a period of time, that sort of thing, that we have a financial advisor to be able to guide us through that.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay? Do we have a motion on this one?
Move to approve the amendment to the contract with DA Davidson, as noted in the email dated January 22nd, 2019, and authorize the city manager to sign. Seconded.
Motion to pass and seconded. Any discussion? Jill?
Counselor President Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Yes. Next item. Beach Bill Commemoration Art Project. Bruce?
Yes, sir. We've had previous conversations about an opportunity that was brought to us by the environmental, or the Oregon Environmental Council. And they had previously assisted in funding of projects related to the Bottle Bill and the Land Use Bill. And they came to us and said that as a result of our role and history with the Beach Bill, that they would like to partner with us on a project to commemorate the Beach Bill. And so this agreement would allow the EOC to start doing fundraising. And they would handle all the grant writing, everything associated with that. And then the council had agreed to funding the $25,000, because we're trying to look for somewhat of a substantial project. And the way that they are marketing the grant writing is that the city will match dollar for dollar up to the $25,000. So they're, that's how they're presenting to potential donors. So with this agreement, I mean, there's, we have the ability to opt out several other things. But this agreement is required, is necessary, at least from the EOC standpoint, or the OEC standpoint, to be able to go to donors and say, these people are serious, you know, and we're representing you and the city as far as trying to put together grant funding. Any questions?
On attachment A, it's talking about funds to match. It appears to me that would be one, two, three, four, whereas that they have agreed to $25,000. Should we say up to $25,000? Because have they agreed to that?
Are you talking about there?
One, two.
Whereas for?
Five.
I see what you're saying. It says that they have agreed.
On donation agreement, attachment A.
Can you just read what you're referring to, please, Robin?
OEC has, you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
OEC has offered to raise and donate to the city funds to match the city's contribution for the creation, installation, and maintenance of the artwork on the terms and conditions set forth herein. And I'm suggesting that maybe we should say funds up to $25,000.
What if they're able to raise more money?
Yeah.
Well, that's a big question.
Yeah. This is phrased as.
We don't want to live with them.
Oh, we see that.
So you're happy with how it reads?
Counselor Rizley, can I understand the concern?
I just wanted to make sure that OEC could raise the amount that we've agreed to raise, you know?
So the warehouse pockets are so background, so they're not, they're not moving money on the OEC.
Oh, okay.
So the agreement portion, I think it's pretty clear that if all funds raised up to hopefully $25,000 will come to the city. And I think at this point, it is somewhat speculative what they are going to be able to raise.
That was.
So they didn't want, like, walk in if they had to raise $25,000. But their goal is to raise as much as the city's $25,000 if we have language in there that says anything related to our parking house.
Okay.
I have a question. In the agreement, in the first pair, first number one under the agreement, it says, upon request by the city, OEC shall donate to the city in the form of a check payable to the city, 80% of all funds raised for the artwork to be used solely to pay for the city's costs. Can you tell me what that, I mean?
Yeah, so I should amend my comment. I didn't mean to take you off.
I just don't understand exactly what that means. It sounds like, well, we'll pay you 80% instead of $25,000.
Yes. So what was explained to me during my conversations with the gentleman from the OEC is that they need to be recouped for their time spent in raising funds. And so points of what they were raised was recoup to OEC's administrative.
Okay, so they won't necessarily, they might, they might raise $25,000, but they get twenty percent of that for their time, right?
Recoup their costs.
Okay. But it's not, so they're, so it says where, so the paragraph that says, the city funds to match, the cities, OEC is offered to raise and donate to the city funds to match the city's contribution. They're not really going to match dollar for dollar?
So their goal, their goal is to raise as much money as they can on behalf of the city. The city has said that they'll put in $25,000 for a piece of art. Again, they were not saying, they were not ready to commit at this point that they could give up 25,000, but they want to take it really in place, make people out and start raising money. And we did, we did agree that eighty to twenty is, either twenty percent go to their administrative costs. So whatever they raise in the name of the city, and this is one I need to amend, but I said to the number easily, eighty percent will come to the city to be used for a big project, twenty percent will stay with them in order to compensate them for what happens.
And in that, it's to their benefit to raise more than 25,000, because then they get more, so.
And for what it's worth, this bar was lost a lot of funding, and eighty to twenty is a pretty big cost.
That seems pretty high. I used to work for United Way. That seems pretty high. Twenty percent does. I remember we used to do it on eight percent, so.
And in this situation, you know, they have a lot of negotiating, they're in a good negotiating position, you know, they're going to go out and raise money on behalf of the city for their art project for us. So it seems reasonable that they would be, they would be cooperating for the efforts.
Is there any time span in here? Or are they just?
Up here?
Yeah, so that's another one of the issues that we address. We don't know when, you know, we hope that they're going to be able to raise as soon as possible, and as we point to me, that, you know, they need to see how much they can raise, because the city has a budget for your art project. So if they can only raise, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, we know that before we go out and commission a piece of art. But how the agreement is written is that, you know, once again, they agree in place, it's allowed to raise funds, maybe for what the actual goal is for fundraising, but upon the city's request. So, you know, when we feel like, through our communications with them, that the fundraising efforts are exhausted, and they have raised X amount of dollars, Y amounts that have backed the city, we're ready to go out and commission a piece of art, then we would request from them the funds due to the city. First, could we add a idea of the timeline?
No, but also I believe the way that it's written is that to match the 25,000, so I think that that would cover, for example, if they only come up with 20,000, then our commitment at that point, I think, is 20. But they're doing, I mean, they approached us, they're doing all of the fundraising, so, you know, other than what the city is willing to contribute.
So if they raise 20,000, and they get 20% of that, that's, what, 4,000? So that's 16,000 they would give us. Does that mean that we're only obligated for 16,000, then? Are we obligated for 20,000?
We're not, I don't believe that we're obligated to anything. I mean, I don't know what their agreements are going to be on the other side, but the, what they have is a goal to try to go ahead and match our funds, but we have the ability to, you know, say go or no go on this.
Yeah. So the answer to the question is 16,000, 20,000? What would we?
That'd be our choice.
What would be, that would be our choice?
Yes. You reduce the amount, we might decide to increase it.
If we reduced the amount, would they be obligated to still come up with the same amount?
I think that the timing of us reducing the amount would be when we find out they've got less than what we had anticipated.
So we're basically contributing based on what they raise, or we can raise more than that? I mean, we could contribute more than that?
They can, they can raise more, we can contribute more. I don't, again, I'm not sure exactly what they're saying to their donors as far as our obligation. I didn't see that our obligation was, you know, to spend absolutely this as they come up with $10, you know, that.
It's a little loosey-goosey, but.
Again, I mean, they're, they're, we're not under an obligation for us to go ahead and spend this money. They're just trying to go ahead and add to the project.
They wanted to tell their donors that the city has put up this much money.
Right.
Has seen capital run.
They feel that it puts them in a much better position, saying the city has, you know, skin in the skin. They're serious.
Okay. Any other questions? What do we need on this? Can't find it here. I need a motion on this one. This is just a discussion, though, Bruce. Do we need a motion, or just a?
No, we need a motion so that we can have an agreement to, them to get started.
I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and Oregon Environmental Council, and authorize the city manager to sign such agreement.
Second.
Second it? Any other discussion? Jill?
Councilor Rusley?
Yes.
Councilor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Councilor Harkey?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stedall?
Yes. Okay, and our last item is a discussion on the 12 Days of Earth Day Committee. Bruce?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had been attempting to provide support to the 12 Days of Earth Day project, and one of the obstacles that we'd run into in the past has been that there was an insurance requirement, and the, we were looking to the organization to come up with that funding, and that caused a series of problems. And so we talked about making it a city event. And I think that there had already been some, I don't know if it was action taken, or thoughts that the, there could be a subcommittee of, either a subcommittee of the Parks, the Parks Committee, or actually the Parks Committee itself. And in further discussions with council, we came, we realized that there's not actually the ability for the committee or a subcommittee to actually manage an event on behalf of the city. So that created an issue. There, there is a solution to that. If the council says that, yes, you can create subcommittees, or however you're going to do this, and you can manage events. That's not, that was a piece that was missing. The other thing is that if the city is actually the sponsor of a parade, then there are First Amendment issues that anybody else can come in and go ahead and be a part of that regardless, because we can't regulate content. And so those were a couple of the things that seemed to work against what was, we were all trying to accomplish. So in order to try to make it still have something happen, and recognizing that in the past the insurance had been a barrier, what I had committed to is that the city would provide funding for whatever the cost was of the insurance, so that that would, you know, no longer be a barrier. Had subsequent conversations with Barbara Knopp, and in those conversations, we were talking about possibly meeting later this week to go ahead and further discuss this. And my thought was, or our thought was, that to expedite the decision-making, y'all are the people that can go ahead and either say you agree with what, you know, my conclusions were, or you can make changes to make certain things happen. And so rather than push that out another month by having the discussion later, I suggested that we put something on the agenda tonight. And Barbara, I'm assuming that you or someone is here to speak about it, or did I? Okay, yeah.
We have, this week attended a year that we have done the 12 Days of Earth Day. We did not have any issues until last year, and that's when that big insurance question came up. We have a very lively, short parade. It's a walking parade, has some people, we've never had any issues. We even had to do one kind of adult police because they were busy with criminals. And, you know, we're, we feel that one of the main purposes of the 12 Days of Earth Day is education, and that's something that's part of our duties is to have educational activities for the city. And we just want to continue with the tradition that we've established. We took on good faith that we were going to have a resolution at tonight's meeting, and so we've been planning all along. And Saturday, I just thought we can't continue the plan unless we have the support of the city. And we do not want to form a subcommittee, we just can do it as part of the Parks Committee, which we did. We had a work session, and we had a major item on us, we just had the discussion about the different activities. And I would very happily answer the question.
And also, just in support of what Barb was saying, that up until very recently, when it came time to actually do the resolution, that was when some of these things came to light, when we're talking about, you know, background or wherestes or whatever, saying they can do this, and then all of a sudden it's like, well, that piece is missing. And then we started talking about the First Amendment part of it, too. So I had been indicating all along that this was very likely, or was practically guaranteed, I guess, that we were going to do this. Yeah, I would say, yeah, wholly. So, so what Barb said is, that is accurate. It's just these other things that I had not contemplated came to light subsequent, and that's why we're talking about it here.
So Barb, am I, am I, am I understanding you right, that Parks Committee is the committee that's planning this, or do you have, are you a member of another committee outside of the city that is planning this?
No, it's, it's the Parks Committee that we do invite public to get involved.
Okay, so if it's the Parks Committee, doesn't that mean the city is still sponsoring it?
Well, yes, if that was to continue, but I think that the things that came to light are saying that, well, if it was just the Parks Committee, but we, I'm sorry, that the council has not given, granted the Parks Committee the ability to operate an event. There are certain things that are listed in the charter for it, that these are the things you can do. That's not one of those. So that's what I'm saying. There are things that the council can remedy, and that's why we're talking now, as opposed to trying, you know, to wait a month. The other issue is, it might be a very small risk, but if, you know, we have an issue with the parade, then, you know, it could happen. If it doesn't happen, and we sponsored it, then, you know, no harm, no foul.
Well, yeah, I thought that was part of the discussion, is we didn't want the city to be sponsoring it because we would have to be opening up the parade to, you know, whoever comes in. But if the Parks Committee is sponsoring it, that means that the city is sponsoring, that means we have to open it up to anybody who comes in. So we're not solving any problem.
Well, the way that we tried to solve the problem, and as Barb said, this had been going on for a number of years, is that one of the big items seemed to be the insurance requirement that came up last year, and that we would take care of that. We would find a way to make it, make that happen. And then everything else could happen, but it wouldn't be part of the Parks Committee. It would be a separate group of people that were putting this on. And we would have to recognize that it wasn't a city function.
I'd like to see it still continue to be a city function with, under the Parks Committee, and to authorize that the Parks Committee do this with the understanding that the city will provide the insurance for it.
I frankly, I'd rather see this group of puffin lovers, and dog lovers, and citizens that like to get together on Earth Day and have the world's smallest parade, be able to continue doing that. It is not a city-sponsored parade, but I would see the city could make donations, like they make donations to other groups, just make a donation to cover their insurance costs, so the city doesn't get pulled in for liability as well. But I, what I'm trying to draw the distinction, rather than formalizing this, is this is a sanctioned parade sponsored by the Parks Department that's under the auspices of the city of Cannon Beach, and therefore we're covering the insurance. As a matter of fact, I didn't even know it was a Parks Department function. All these years, I've walked in it almost every year. I thought it was just a group of people, and then there's suddenly this one crazy person dresses up like a puffin. And.
That's scary.
And, so, 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 can't, can't we just? Take this group and cover their insurance. Barb, how, how difficult will it be for you, your group, to just transition to be a citizenry kind of group?
Well, I mean, we have done all of our planning this year with the Parks Committee.
Yeah.
And, you know, after last year's 12 Days, and not getting a lot of support from people, I, I need help getting it organized, and that's why it's nice to have the Parks Committee involved, and that just for volunteer people. And, I mean, and that's how we structured it this year.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying, if you went to those folks and said, we're just not going to be Parks people today, we're going to go meet over here, and still do everything that you always do, just so we don't have that concern about being under the city, city will still help by giving a grant for the insurance. I'm just.
I think the Parks Committee who gives grants, if there's something they can grant, that's a big process.
Well, again, it wouldn't be the Parks Committee. I mean, that's, that's the concern that we're having about as far as, you know, the feeling that it's under the city's auspices. I have no problem. I'm just saying, I would say empower this group to do it this year, and then we, as the council, we still have to talk about events in total, and we can start wrapping this up into how we want to, how we as the city want to manage events, and whether we want to go into that problem. That then gives them a year to organize from a different angle. That would be another way to do it.
After last year's event, we didn't even do it because we thought, you know, that we asked the event issue long before.
Yeah.
Go ahead. To have a sense of clarity on where we are today. So when I started getting involved with the questions that I got, were about liability, about being a part of the subcommittee, about the social event. And so as a committee, my first look was, okay, so what authority has the city council granted of Parks and community service committee? So I went online, and I took a look at the ordinance, and it establishes all the things that Parks and community service committee are allowed to do. And, you know, that's another thing everybody's aware of. The city council's plenary authority for the city. You have all the authority that cities potentially have invested in the city council. So you don't have to look anywhere for your authority. If you want to do something, you're legally able to do it, you can do it. Any subcommittee or any committee has very limited authority. So in order for the Parks Committee to take an action, they have to have that authority granted to the city council. And so as I agree, the Parks Committee grants authority to the city council, the Parks Committee does not have, currently have the authority to form a subcommittee or conduct an event. So I'm.
How do you do an educational activity, then, if you don't have an authority?
So what I'm saying is that these things could have happened, and they could have, you know, sprung off the Parks Committee's grant authority from the city council, but this sort of event is not. sort of event is not currently authorized by the city council. So one of those questions I was receiving was because there's this lack of official grant authority. What I would compare it to is rural Kennedy Farmer's Market. That is an event that's run by the city. That is a committee that has a very clear grant of authority to run an event. You take a look at what their authorization is, and it's encoded in developed policy and implementing the event. So if the city council, and you can, definitely can, have a committee that conducts this parade, with the authorized Parks and Recreation Committee to do so, or the Parks and Research Committee to do so, you just haven't done so yet. So if you want to go down that road, you can do so. The secondary concern is that you are creating a public speech forum. So just as those concerns are dealt with for your Cannon Beach Farmers Market, you need to address them with this parade. So by having a city-sponsored parade, you know, down Main Street, as a city event, you can't discriminate based on people. So as Bruce said, it's probably a small concern, but as a public speech forum, you have to let everybody speak, just as you let everybody speak when you open it up all the time, you know. You can't discriminate against those people. What you can have is reasonable rules, time, place, and manner of regulation, like you do at your Cannon Beach Farmers Market, in order to, you know, address some of those concerns. So my recommendation to you, if you're going to have a city-sponsored parade, is that you do some background work first to establish reasonable time, place, and manner of regulations that don't potentially violate the First Amendment. This is a long way to say that if this is the route that you guys want to go down, if you have a city-sponsored parade for the 12 Days of Earth, you can definitely do that, but I think we've missed some of the steps that I would advise that we take in order to do so. However, what Bruce talked about is something a little bit different. I'm not going to get too far down into the First Amendment issues, but as a government body, you can speak, you can have an opinion, you can express a support of this event verbally from the dais, and you can also express support of this event by, you know, making a donation to have our insurance for this year. That would mean that this 12 Days of Earth, they'll do it definitely, but they are doing apparently for the last 10 years, which is to have a parade down Main Street, you get a permit, but they're a private party. So as a private party, a body that got their own permit, they can decide who's going to be in the parade without risking violating the First Amendment. So again, I hope that wasn't wrong, but that's kind of my history of some concerns about where we're at today.
My question on that is, how do you establish that they are a private party?
They do not have any city sponsorship, so we are, you're making a donation to them like you would decide to make a donation to school districts to support an after-school party event. So you're just making a donation to a private party in support of it. You're using your money as speak.
But if we authorize the Parks Committee to put on the 12 Days of Earth, that is not a private party?
No, that would be a public sponsorship. And we do have more than just a parade.
Yeah, it's a whole 12 Days.
So my concern is that the city is very much involved in, I mean, our tree planting, the ATRAP program.
Our shredding?
Our shredding, I mean, everything.
I think everybody understands that by saying parade, we mean the entire program.
I didn't. I thought it was just free speech and a parade.
But it also means free speech at the entire program. So that means, you know, if, if we have a parade and a bunch of loggers show up, we double the size of the parade.
And they still have to walk.
And they still have to walk, so, you know, that's, that's the idea, that this could mean other folks.
Or if neo-Nazis want to show up, walk in our...
Well, whatever, you know, I think we've had such a small group of people show up to do the smallest parade, as Mike said, it's, you show up at a certain hour, you walk the street, and that's that.
We're spending a lot of time talking about 15 minutes.
That's, that's on a windy day.
We're talking about the insurance that covers the booths in the, in the bank parking lot, and all the events that go on that, that whole, the shredder truck sitting over here in the parking lot, all that be covered by insurance, more than just a 10-minute parade. Oh, you're, you're slowing down, Barb.
So I guess we're, from what I'm trying to summarize Ashley was saying, we got two kind of choices, whether the city wants to sponsor this, or whether we don't, I guess.
Well, I think, if the city's going to do it, I think we need to take a whole lot more time and be very specific on what it encompasses and all that, but I would like to just see the city make a contribution to this group, people that are volunteering to run a 12 Days of Earth event, and then deal with whether we want to make that a city, sanctioned city event next year, but then get very specific on what, what, who, how, and time and place, and all those details that we don't have time to do now, and they don't have time to address it now.
Well, and the Parks Committee did review what their duties were just last year, and I guess I'm surprised that that's not part of it, but if they did a review with the city council, did they ever get it?
Right. And did the city council grant, so what I'm, what I'm looking at is what you have in your, in your code. There could be other grants that are out there, and that's what we need to be looking at.
It was quite extensive.
But it was more of after the presentation, it was very, very good, thank you very much.
And I know we talked about 12 Days in there, because that was...
We didn't know it was an issue.
A big part of what is done.
So, I mean, a presentation, and, you know, a group coming up and presenting and saying, like, this is what we've accomplished over the years, over the year, and the city council saying, like, we support you, you know, in my, in my mind, isn't this saying as, you know, an ordinance or a resolution that makes very clear that the city council has granted authority to this group to run an event in the name of the city?
Could it be a stepping stone towards putting this together within a year's time?
There is absolutely no event the city council from taking this city program if you wanted to. What I'm saying, and again, very, very legally, you haven't, I have not seen that you've created the actual document or officially granted the authority.
No, I don't believe we have. We had a work session with the whole Parks Committee here, and we had a big discussion about what they do, and what we think they should be doing, and all that kind of stuff. That then, I believe, went into the discussion that we will be then talking about events in general soon. And that was beginning of last year, and we hadn't, we haven't gotten there yet because we keep putting that off, which is our fault.
Plus, we were told to have a, have a work session in December. We were told that there would be a resolution to make the city event, that what didn't appear on the January agenda, when I contacted Bruce, and he said he was sorry he would fix it, and then I had to see that it wasn't on this month's agenda, and my government's government in February, March, and so I looked Monday morning, it wasn't on the agenda for this meeting. I mean, I assumed that it was all taken care of. I think about some other events, too, like our, maybe state fair that we have last made. Why was that not an issue?
I think it should have been. It's the same, I think it's the same issue. We're just now becoming aware that it is an issue.
I think the other, kind of on top of this issue, is the fact that Earth Week is, or Earth, 12 Days of Earth, is coming up, and the organizers need to be functioning now. So we need to make some sort of decision tonight, whether we're just going to say, no, you guys have to go do it privately, or we are going to empower them so that they can do it at least this year. I think that's where we need to be.
I'm in favor of empowering the Parks Committee to move forward, and given how the event has taken place over the last 10 years, I think it would be a great disservice to the community to watch things up at this point.
Okay. I guess I'm going to ask Ashley. Empowering them to do that would, you know, basically be a decision of some kind by the council to let them do what they've been doing. And I would put a time limit on it, just because I think we need to discuss this back when we talk about larger events, and events in total, so that we can hammer that out, but at least for this year.
I fully support that, Sam.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I don't, I don't want it to not go forward, I just want to make sure we know what our responsibilities are, they know what our responsibilities are and theirs, and, you know, make a donation of insurance costs, but...
So my, my issue is, again, you have to do this, but I, I'm not sure, like, who's responsible for what at this point. So, Mayor, to answer your question, it seems like it's an easy solution, that the council can make a motion to, you know, support the 12 Days of Earth Day, 12 Days of Earth, 12 Days of Earth, and that would be a grant of authority to the Parks Committee to run this event. So, you know, you guys can, you can do that tonight. My concern with that is that there's still, there's still not clarity on who is actually running this event, and who has what authority. And now we have a committee running an event in the name of the city without kind of the necessary city control. So that would be my concern. You can go forward with it tonight, you know, in light of my concerns.
Your concerns about, I'm trying to figure out what the details would be that you would need. I mean, we, I could easily ask Barb to say, these are the things they do, and then we could list those out, and then would that be, and then we could say, we have, give them authority to do that?
That would be a way to do it. What is the event date?
April.
The 22nd of 2019, which is next month. Bruce, do you have anything to say?
Understanding what your points are, I think that the resolution of saying that we will provide the insurance, it would still be the same people operating the, the event, they wouldn't be wearing their Parks Commission, or Parks Committee hats, but it's the same people putting on the same event with that particular item regarding the insurance. And a little bit of history with that, it was just around the time that I came, that Tammy was very much involved and had concerns, you know, as did our insurance company, about the way that we were doing some things, and that's when we got more restrictive, or more, developed more controls to protect the city. And we had a similar, a little bit different of a, of a situation with Sandcastle. So we are getting to where we probably should have been on these events, and so I don't think that there's a huge difference if whether or not we say, okay, this is a city event, or if we say, okay, this will be a private event, and if the same people are still willing to run it, and then we take care of that cost side to it, and then, you know, we don't necessarily take on the concerns. But if the council does wish to make this a city event, then I don't, I honestly don't think the risk is terribly high. I'm not sure what all of the ramifications are, I know we're talking about the cost of the, the insurance. I don't know how much broader it gets from that, if what other things might come up.
So... So we have one more council meeting for the actual event, right?
Right, but we have to get it organized and planned.
So my recommendation, hearing, hearing how the council wants to move forward, is that you do a motion tonight to grant the Parks Committee the, you know, authority to conduct the event, and ask them to bring back, or ask staff to bring back, you know, a resolution memorializing the grant authority at next council meeting. And essentially, if you have a staff person, which I'm assuming is Karen, who acts as the committee's on, with the committee, and kind of more acts as like the staff control into, any concerns and issues can be felt through Karen. The city still has, you know, a staff person that is able to...
And I, we can make the meeting on the 12th, a voting meeting, or a special meeting, so that we're not waiting until April before we actually do something. So we can, this could be put in place next week.
And what I would need, if I was going to draft a resolution, is if someone wants to do that, is, and who is on the committee, and it's supposed to be the Parks Committee. So, so I would need more detail, what are the actual, the Parks Committee has a work session on Thursday, and we can just use the calendar to...
Why can't we, you know, the city council just authorize the city manager to provide funds to the Parks Committee for the insurance, something simple like that, you know, this one time only. You're not authorizing a parade, you're not...
We still have to give the committee authorization, because right now they don't have that.
No, we're just, we're just, we're going to make a donation to the Parks Committee.
But the Parks Committee can't do it.
They don't have the authority to run an event.
They can give them the...
So I think, I think what helps the benefits is suggesting that it's our original recommendation that for this year, they essentially become a private body. They get a permit of a private body, which the city council will return, and then we address it for next year. Am I in shape in that regard?
I'm not sure I'm happy with that.
I would, I would say, let's, let's, I'm trying to think of how I would make a motion of this, but if, if it's a res- a resolution to empower or authorize the Parks Committee to perform 12 Days of Earth Day for 2019, that limits it to this year.
So are we going to vote in on March 12th or what?
We can't, if we need to bring back a resolution, rather than waiting until April, I think it'd be fair for everybody to know what the status is as soon as possible.
Sure, we can do that on the 12th.
So how about this, how about motion that authorizes the Parks Committee to work with city staff to implement the 12 Days, for general state, to implement the 12, 12 Earth Days for 2019 only, and to bring back a resolution to this effect on the March 12th?
Good with that. Want to make a motion of that?
Go with that.
So one of us needs to make that motion, correct?
Yes, that's the challenge.
You can say so moved, because I think Jill has it.
And in, in that case, I, I make a motion, as Ashley has presented it, that we authorize the Parks Committee to be able to move forward.
So moved.
So moved.
Checking it. Any final discussion? Jill?
Councilor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Could you read the, could you read the motion again?
So it will be for just this year that Parks Committee will work with city staff to implement the 12 Earth Days for 2019 only, and it will be a voting meeting on the 12th, and to bring back a resolution to the matter.
And we don't mention anything about insurance in this?
That's a, that's a separate decision, in fact, that we do that whether we want to or not.
Yes.
She voted yes.
I said yes.
Okay, so Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Council Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Okay, we'll bring it, we'll talk about this again on the... Talk about this again on the 12th.
Okay, and I just want to make one point of clarification, is that now that it is a city event, we will cover the insurance. So I don't think we need a separate decision. It's part of the running the event. That's covered.
Quite right, the thing called a few and invite you to the parade. It's not should be given.
As long as it's windy and rainy, Barb. Okay, that concludes the regular meeting. Any status report, communications?
Can I ask a question on the status report? Something kind of jumped out at me, and I didn't know much about it. And it has to do with the CD Department worked with department directors, staff, and legal to bring the Nicholson short-term rental violation to a conclusion. Can that be, can I find out more about that? Could you share that, Bruce?
Yes, we were going to send you an email on this, but I can go over it now if you would like. There was, it's not the same Nicholson as what there was a previous issue from a land use thing. But they were found to have been operating a short-term rental for a long period of time without the necessary licensing. And so we went back, I believe it was like three years, and calculated what the tax revenue that was lost, as well as the interest on that amount of money. And it came out to just over $63,000. And they did pay that. Where we ran into a glitch, and it's part of what's in front of the Planning Commission now, because we talked about doing a, you know, a look at short-term rentals. We were surprised to find that if they had a license, they would lose it for up to two years for this particular offense. Our ordinance was silent if you didn't have a license before this started. And so our ability to say, "Well, you know, we're also going to take your license," we didn't have the authority to do that. And so that's on the table to go ahead and try to fix that. And like I said, it's the Planning Commission now, or, yeah, Planning Commission now. And the city has received the $63,000, which was, again, the amount of revenue that was lost over a three-year period. And they were only required to keep three years of records. We know it was probably longer than that, as well as interest. So.
So at this point, they can continue to rent?
Yes.
They don't have to have a property manager to work with to, because I thought that if they had violated the rule, that they either would need to have a two-year wait, or they could have a property manager manage the property for them to show them how to do it properly?
So what's the study mission of property management?
Yeah, it's not in place yet.
Exposed.
Okay.
They didn't have a license originally, so we have, we didn't have, we don't have any authority to require them to do that.
No, they are.
They were issued a permit.
Yes.
Once they came, and it was actually not just three years, or how many years? Was it two, nine, two thousand and five?
Okay, I stand corrected on that.
That was one. Then, a hundred miles an hour in a distance five was one of the most.
Yep. It happens every now and again.
How'd you catch it?
I don't intend.
I just thought, man, oh, man, that is a race.
Yeah, it's reckless driving. It's actually a crime.
Well, thank you.
Just for communications, I met with the superintendent of the school district yesterday for a little luncheon. They are presenting a new assistant school district as a superintendent. Hopeful. She was, is their finalist for, they haven't decided yet, but. So I just met with her, sorry, I can't remember her name right this minute, with a few other notable folks. So that was an intriguing little interplay. I thought there was something else I was going to tell you, but I can't remember it, so, there we go.
Do you know how many candidates they have?
I do not. I felt like what Sheila was telling me was that this was the one she really wants. So, and she was showing them around the school district. They'd been up on the property and done all that kind of stuff. It's more of a show and tell than it was a official kind of presentation. Bruce?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's, we have a meeting tentatively scheduled for a discussion about City Hall on March 13th. We are also going to have some, we're tentatively having discussion tomorrow after the meeting we're having with Escape Lodging in the Chamber. If we have the meeting on the 13th, I'm asking that we change the time from, was it 5:30 to 4 o'clock, so that all of our counselors can attend.
It's okay with myself.
On the 13th.
That's March?
Yes.
That's a Wednesday?
We're a Wednesday.
Yeah, we already have it scheduled. It's just scheduled for 5:30. Depending on what happens tomorrow, we may or may not have that meeting. But if we do, I would ask that it be 4 o'clock.
That should work for me.
Okay, all right. Then we will re-notice for 4 o'clock. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Then we are adjourned. Thank you.